Meeting format for work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream on our, on our, available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 22, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the public webcast and meeting materials webpage. And that I thank you all for, for joining us. And I call this October 23rd, 2024 City Council Work Session to order, and I'm going to turn it directly over to the city manager for this first item.
Thank you, Mayor. So our first item is going to be rediscussing our revenue proposal of the fire fee. I'm joined, let's make sure this is working right. Assuming that's all good. Joined this afternoon by Twila Miller, so our Chief Financial Officer. Twila and I are going to give the presentation today, and so it won't hop out around quite as much. And I just want to say, as we get closer, or more information gets out to the public about this proposal, I think more people are starting to pay attention. And so some of our first slides are going to be a little bit repetitive, but I do think it's important for us to always set the context of the problem we're trying to solve, and not just jump into the solution, assuming everybody's been, been paying attention. So today, we really will just do a recap of the problem. We're going to walk through just the elements that are in the ordinance that were attached to your agenda item that would implement the, the fee for fire services. And then I will finish up by talking a little bit about what we're hearing as we've been out in the community. So we've seen this a lot, but really the, when we, when we met with the revenue advisors and when we talking to you, we have a number of challenges we're trying to solve. The first is the, is the critical funding gap. So when we adopted our two-year biennial budget, we put in a $8 million, eight to $10 million revenue plug, knowing that we had to solve for that problem. And that's an immediate right here gap that we were able to, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, we were able to solve a portion of that one time to get us through the biennium. But as we think about and plan for next year's budget, which we'll present in May, we'll have to have answered these questions, one way or the other, either through a new revenue source or, or cuts. We've also talked to you a lot about some of the areas that are still at risk, because as some of what we've heard from the community is, this doesn't seem like it solves all the problems, and it doesn't. There's still issues with some of the things that we do one time that are, don't have a long-term funding source. So that's still something we need to talk about. New and expanded services, this does address some new address, could address some newer services and fire and EMS, but it doesn't address some of the other priorities. Again, you know, as complicated as our budget is with 35 different funds, which can get really confusing for folks, like what are you paying for with stormwater versus road? And how can you, how can you afford to build bike lanes when you have a general fund gap? We're really talking about the general fund, which is not, you know, those other funds can't pay for, which is some of our basic essential services around fire, police, library and recreation, some of our central business functions, our municipal court, really just talking about that, the general fund. And when you look at the equation we're trying to solve each and every year, which is, you know, all of our, you know, most of our expenses are employees and materials that we actually need to do the job, plus any increases to any of our, our contracts, any of our labor contracts, any, any of that has to equal what our revenues are. And in the general fund, the bulk of our revenues are property taxes that, as we all know, are set at, have a, you know, have a cap at about 3%. And the contribution in lieu of taxes from E-Web, and then the fees for service. So when we're looking at that, you know, the contribute, the silt from E-Web, we, we don't set that rate, the property taxes, we can't set that rate. We do have the ability to change fees and fines, and you've done a lot of that. We've implemented a lot of that in the budget. But that, you can't, you know, you can't set land use fees at a level to, to cover this kind of a gap. You showed this slide the last time too. And so it was just a different way of showing it of like, we're just sort of out of balance that, and we have been for, for years, and that'll show up again in another slide. But as we think about, you know, where do our general fund dollars go, and where will reductions sort of come from, you can kind of see here, as you look through this chart, we showed it last time, largest proportion of our budget is in police and fire EMS. We do have a, a good amount of investments in library, recreation, and cultural services, you know, a number of community centers, the library, the branch libraries, a lot of central business functions, which includes all of our facilities, our municipal court, and all of the other things that, that run the businesses and run all those other programs and services. And that, I think, and I know I've said this many times, but has to equal every year. We're not allowed to run in a deficit like federal government. So sometimes people don't understand, we have to solve for this every year, we just don't have an option to, which is why we always have, like to have a little bit of reserves, because if something comes up, and we need to dip into it to solve that year, we can. And our reserves are lower than our target rate. This has been going on for a long time. It was predicted in the late 80s, as they were contemplating and then implementing the property tax measures across the state. And we have seen it consistently through my career, and I would say for sure in the last couple of years, especially in this last biennium, which, when we showed you this last slide, we hadn't actually calculated in what we did during the June supplemental budgets. So we actually did even more. So one of the things I'm hearing in the community is a little bit of, people aren't understanding how, like, where are the priorities getting set? And I feel like I've missed an opportunity on multiple occasions, actually, to talk about the work we've done, the work that you've done on setting your strategic goals, you, you know, the community survey, the strategic goals, the strategic plan. The strategic plan really did say, hey, we want to prioritize these urgent community needs that we're hearing about. And we built this budget around all four of those areas of your strategic plan. So we were careful where we took the cuts, not to take them from the areas where we thought had the most impact on those urgent community needs. And we actually made cuts to invest in new services. So we used existing dollars to create new services to make even a bigger difference in those new needs. So I don't, you know, it's a, I do think you have done a lot of work on setting your priorities, but it's not the, the way I think most people imagine that, that you would do that. Over the years, we've seen some changes in our citywide FTE per thousand. This is a number that is calculated by, by most cities. And as you can see from 08, we're still lower than we were in 08. And the uptick in the last couple of years has been from resources we added with the community safety payroll tax. I did a little bit of research to go back to like, what was really happening even before that? So kind of 1988-ish time, and we were at 10.3 citywide. What's more interesting is when you start to look at the general fund, which has fallen more consistently. In 88, we were actually at seven and a half, which means that, you know, if you think about the population difference between 1988 and today, we've essentially absorbed the entire population of Springfield with three less employees per thousand, if that makes sense. Or the, you get, you get what I'm getting at. Specific to the discussion we're having today, these are rough numbers, but the fire and EMS calls that we were getting in the, in the 80s was about 3,000 per year. And today, it's about 30,000 per year. Which is why, you know, we're, we're here talking about a fire services fee. And I'm going to just pause here for a minute and talk about a couple of things. As you know, from that first slide, we're trying to solve a couple of problems. We're trying to stabilize the general fund, and I'm trying to figure out a way to help us grow our fire EMS department and services. It's not, as I've said before, it's the only department that doesn't really see a lot of external resources coming in to kind of supplement and grow, doesn't, doesn't have a levy like some of our services does. It, it does, based on some budget actions you took, did absorb the, the payroll tax, did absorb the, the engine company. So that, that is true. But other than that, there hasn't been a real, specific coordinated effort to figure out how we're going to grow this service. And the reason why I think this, as your, as your sort of CEO, when I think about some of the other service areas where we have, we have the ability to sort of fall back and decline, like during the Eugene decisions time, when there was the first cuts, I remember, you know, when I got hired, they'd made a decision to cut all irrigation to parks and save money on, on water bills. I actually, my position was added to the city because they had so much infrastructure degrade, that they actually had to hire people back to fix it as they, to make it better. So the parks weren't all browned out, and the trees weren't all dying. You can do that in a service like parks, you can kind of up and, up and back and be like, hey, we need to, we really need to catch up. I don't think you can do that with fire and EMS. I, I think if you're at a point where you need to try to catch up, it's a little bit concerning. And the things that I see out there that are concerning me, and I'm, I'm giving you this pitch a little bit, because I keep, I'm hearing it in the community, but we have different threats than we had. You know, we have more wildfire threats than we did before. We have far more dense density, higher buildings, things that require a lot of resource. And if we have an issue at one of those places, it, you know, we draw a lot of people to, to those buildings that creates an issue in other parts of the city. So as you, you know, as you see here, we haven't added a firefighter or paramedic since the early 80s. We've been able, I think, to, to continue to innovate, like, we've been able to do this for this many years because of things like Third Battalion, the fire merger, I think, understanding that the calls for service were changing, and some of the strategic efforts to, to ramp up some of those medical calls. So there's been a lot of work. But I, I feel like, you know, what we're doing with this fee, and the reason why I think it's important, is we're setting ourselves up to be able to not fall behind as we go forward. This is Twila's slide.
Thank you, Sarah. So good afternoon, everyone. I'm Twila Miller, the Chief Financial Officer. And this issue with the structural gap in the general fund is not just in Eugene, it's really felt by all jurisdictions across the state. And many jurisdictions have implemented service fees as a way to supplement their revenues to provide essential services to the community. So a few examples are shown here. Service fees are really billed to people or persons who occupy or have use of developed property, and they generally are a fee for a specific service. One of the other aspects of a service fee is they're broadly applied. There are no exemptions for service fees, unlike property taxes under the state. There are several categories that are exempt, such as governmental entities and charitable organizations. And a service fee is applied broadly to all who, all in the community. And it's seen to be a stable and fair method to provide services and help diversify funding sources for communities. There we go. So the proposed, or proposed ordinance in front of you would establish a fire service fee that would generate $10 million in net revenue for fire and emergency medical services. So $8 million in existing service, and the ability to raise an additional $2 million for expansion of service. The basis for the fee is square footage of structures on developed property. This would correlate to the size of a structure with the benefit that they would receive from fire services. And it is also based on data, which is readily available to the city for ease of administration. The fire service fee would be assessed on developed property. And generally, for a residential property, this would include a dwelling and a garage, if there was one. And for commercial or industrial properties, all usable business structures would be included. We would use the square footage data from Arlid, and through, using that information, we're able to tie square footage back to the E-Web account structure, similar to the process we use for existing stormwater fee billings. So bills would be sent to the current E-Web customers based on their account setup. Also included, 3% of gross revenues, or about $350,000 per year, would be available to help those in our community that need assistance in paying the fee. We envision this being similar to the existing customer care model currently in place at E-Web, and we're having conversations with staff there about how that would be enacted. And we are also keeping this simple, one rate, this makes it very easy to understand and administer, and it helps keeps our costs down. This provides maximum funding for the services needed. And we do believe it would be most effective to have E-Web, but provide billing and collection for us. And we're continuing to explore this possibility with E-Web staff as we look to the future. And then you may remember this from our last work session on this topic, we have not made changes to the revised structure we brought to you last month. This additional rate, this included additional rate categories, including more gradation at the lower square footage levels. And there are also not separate categories for residential versus commercial. Regardless of the building type, we would use Arlid data to determine the number of square feet associated with each account, and then bill accordingly. This structure would generate, again, the $10 million in net revenue annually. So between 750 and 3,500 square feet is where we see the majority of residential accounts. These three categories account for 90% of total residential accounts. On the commercial side, 65% of commercial accounts would fall into the rate categories between 50 and 10,000 square feet, and would pay $38 a month or less, while 87% of commercial accounts would be between 50 and 30,000 square feet, and would be pay $113 or less. When you get past 30,000 square feet, as you can see in the far right-hand column, the number of accounts impacted goes down significantly. And again, the cost, monthly cost of the median single-family home would be, is estimated at $10 per month, and the monthly cost to the medium commercial, median commercial customer would be $38 per month. And with that, I'll hand things back to Sarah. Thanks.
So just a, a little bit on, on what we're hearing. And again, you know, I've talked to some individuals, we, we went to the Chamber of Commerce, LGAC, and I met with a group of business people this morning as well. And I'll, I'm going to try to just sort of give some general things we've heard. And then if you choose to hear, send this to a public hearing, I think you'll, you'll hear a lot of this again. A definite, like, I will just say, love for fire and EMS, definitely a service that people care deeply about. A lot of questions about that. So some of what I said to you today about how we've been able to kind of navigate that lack of growth with firefighters. So there was a lot of questions about that, how we've navigated that, some questions around whether or not this is or isn't supplementing Springfield, some questions about the types of calls we get, and it was just more of a, I would just say, a lot of questions about the service, and interest in the service. I think, I would say, generally, people understand the issue, they understand the problem we're trying to solve. And, you know, I would say, some feel the, the approach is, is pretty reasoned, they support it, support the amounts, and some have different solutions. So that kind of got more to, we understand the problem, we understand the need, and I would probably solve it this way. And that, you know, usually came around to setting priorities and cutting, you know, we're cutting other services at the city in order to always make sure that this service was protected. Some concerns that this doesn't stabilize us for the long term, that, you know, that this, this won't grow fast enough, and the issues that we face are big enough that we'll be back doing this again. People really appreciated the simplicity of it. So far, the people I've talked to, they like that it's simple, and that it's not, you know, that it's a fee and easy to understand and apply. There's a, there was, there's been a number of questions, mechanical questions about more administrat, so I would say mechanics and administration. How are we applying it? How does it apply across multi-tenant situations, especially if there's different meters or different bills? Just overall, how it's administered, questions about E-Web or the city. So just questions about that. And we had some people bring up why we wouldn't, why we aren't considering vacant land, why we're only doing structures. We've answered all these questions. I'm just letting, I told you I'd let you know what people are talking about. Some issues that came up today, that it was a new one, issues raised about people that actually live inside the Eugene city limits but aren't E-Web customers, and how do they, how do we account for that, and how we bill for that? A lot of questions about the payroll tax, and what if fires in that, and what's not in that. And, and I would just say, generally, the overlapping of, of things was a, was a point of discussion. I wouldn't, it wasn't like questions, but I think, especially if you're a downtown business, you have a number of overlapping things between the downtown district DEI fees that you pay, payroll tax, and this. And so it wasn't, just, there's just some discussion about that. I think you would hear about that at the forum. That's kind of, there may have been other things that I'm missing right at the moment. Those were, were the basis of the themes. So I'll just remind you again, kind of where we are today, that your next work session is right now. If you choose today, you have the ability to move this to a public hearing and hear what folks think, or not. If you do that, remember, we, we set you up on a timeline that this could be administered by July, and built into the next biennial budget. So that's really what this top line shows, your ability to do that. The bottom line is just reminding everybody, we're getting new forecast information, we're putting the materials together to build the budget, and we're working, we'll be working on scenarios that are with fee, without fee. If you choose not to move forward today, or at any point along this process, the work that we're doing right now, we will want to work with you on earlier than we typically do. So we would be bringing you back together in January to talk about where those priorities really lie, in order to be able to kind of finish that budget up and have it ready, in order to present it to you in May. And I think that's, with that, I'll stop sharing. And turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you so much. I see Randy already in the queue, but I just want to say, and, and Lindsay, I just want to say two things, which is, I very much appreciate your sort of going back to the beginning and recognizing that people are now just tuning in. And that was a, kind of a very helpful and clear discussion. And I also just want to mention that Randy and I were talking about the outreach and, and looked at the website, and that there's a really good FAQ on the city's website, that answers a lot of questions. If counselors haven't looked at it, it's really very, very helpful. So with that, I'll turn it over to Randy, and then Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah and Twila, for the presentation. As I've shared before, I do have some consternation about this. I mean, it's, I realize our back is up against the wall, and we need to figure this out. I want to make it very clear to the public, this is not a fire department problem, it is a citywide department problem. And you could pick any department and put this fee on it, it wouldn't be their problem either. I, I know that we have not grown, and, you know, watching this for over 44 years now, from a fire perspective, it's not that we haven't made the case in the past for the flat staffing levels that we've had with increasing calls and complexity. But it's, it's just, you know, I, I constantly heard, when I was at the exec table, about, well, the survey comes back and nobody says anything about fire. Well, nobody's going to say anything about fire when there's not even a question about fire on the, the survey. And so to me, that's a really important point. Where I get a little frustrated on this is, as I've said before, fire is a foundational service. And it's something that most people feel that that's, you know, some of their first dollars in their tax fees, going to support the foundational services, the things we need to be safe and function as a city. So I, I want to make that point. And, and again, you know, this is not a fire department specific problem. It's nothing the firefighters have done. In fact, to the contrary, our fire department and our firefighters have worked hard on this. They've been innovative, they've, they've made personal sacrifices to try and keep things going, and they truly care about the public they serve. So I want to make sure that that's, that's clear from my perspective. With that said, and the fact that we do have our back against the law, I am ready to vote yes on this, to move it to this next level, and to, you know, hear from our public what they think about it. And I think that is an important step. You know, community input, when it's going to, you know, attack their wallet, need to have say in this. I also appreciate what the mayor said about the information, the, the frequently asked questions and the information on the city's website. I think we all should be turning our constituents towards that site, because it does have a lot of good information, and it's succinctly put. It's not page upon page after page, it's just a really concise, well-defined way that we're approaching this. And I really appreciate finances' work on this. I, I think you've taken a situation that has some, some concerns, and you've, you've done an absolutely great job of packaging it. And with that, I'm out of time. I'll wait and see if I need a second round. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Lindsay, and then Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Twila, and our whole finance team for the thoughtfulness and considerations made throughout this process. I was able to attend the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week, and it was a really great experience for me to see how other cities are really handling a lot of the same challenges that we're facing here in Eugene. I was able to attend a session about property taxes here in Oregon, and ways that cities are funding essential services like their fire departments. The conclusion of that session, that was really just that, we cannot wait for a potential reform of our tax system, even though it's broken and doesn't make a lot of sense in a lot of ways. And the recommendation was that cities implement utility fees like this. And like we saw in Twila's presentation, all across Oregon, cities, large and small, are already utilizing these fees to ensure that they can adequately respond to and protect the safety and the well-being of their population. So it, it doesn't feel good to charge additional fees to anyone, but I do feel strongly that we need to invest in our fire department. They're such a critical element to our system, and mitigating house fires, protecting our forests against wildfires, and to our communities, of course, mental and physical health, like we've discussed. And they've been so innovative in how they've been able to adapt and be more efficient, like dealing with the closure of the University District Emergency like dealing with the closure of the university district emergency room and just so many other pressures. But there's only so much more that they can do to keep at the same level or increased level of services without additional investment. And secondly, the way that this has been structured really works to protect those that are lower income, ensuring that if they qualify for assistance with utilities, they will be able to have the fee waived. So it won't impact those who would be overly burdened. I mean, I'm sure there's gaps in that. I know that people who might struggle the most are actually those that barely don't meet the income eligibility for a variety of benefits. But I think we can continue to look at ways to address that. And we've heard a lot of anguish from our community about the potential for cutting budget for things like our library or animal services as we've gone through so many budget cuts over the last many years. And there's only so many more cuts that can be made before our community really deeply feels the lack of services that they've come not just to enjoy, but to expect that we provide. So I'm ready to vote in favor of taking this to public hearing and listen to what our community has to say. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mike and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much, everyone, for the presentation. I join my friend Randy, I suppose, and using the word consternation, that's a good word for how I'm feeling about this. There are two issues for me that are most present. Number one relates to what you were talking about. Well, start with number one. For me, the long-term solution, and this is a long-term problem, it's not a short-term problem. In the out years, it gets worse. The long-term solution is to grow our tax base rather than add additional fees. That's my very basic response to the issue. And by doing that, I mean, we need more housing and we need to see business development in our community and manufacturing in our community expand for a number of reasons, but not the least of which is our tax base locally in Eugene compared to other cities hasn't grown at the same rate. And we need it to in order to afford this stuff. The second issue for me, I'm, I'm going to risk saying, asking unpopular questions, I suppose. Sarah, you mentioned in nineteen eighty-eight was the last time we added positions for fire. Since then, we haven't added any new positions for fire and EMS. Did I hear that correctly?
Actually, I don't know when the last time is we added positions for fire. Nineteen eighty-eight is just the year I was using to call volume.
Sorry, my phone jumped in here. Here's my question. Have we added personnel and positions to Library, Recreation and Cultural Services since nineteen eighty-eight?
So I'll say this. We've added positions. We can go through and show you what those ads are from a certain date. Some of the archives are hard to get to. We have added positions in fire. They just haven't been firefighters. So that's a small nuance. But yes, we've added through mostly levies and other things that you, that have been voted on over time to grow services, yes.
For me, there's a little bit of mission creep in some areas, and I'm not saying it's Library, Recreation and Cultural Services. But I, I do have an issue with what you showed about general fund percentages where fire and EMS, a mandatory, in my opinion, service of the community compared with the, the Library, Recreation and Cultural Services, which is nice to have and an important part of quality of life, but it's not emergency services. And I think, as you referenced earlier, most people in the community see those priority differences. And the difference of spending twenty-two percent of general fund versus sixteen percent of general fund, I, I think is a, is a mismatch or a misalignment, in my opinion. One of the problems we have is structural in nature in that one of those other percentages of general fund was three percent for public works. If it's, if we compared raw dollars, we'd know that you spend quite a lot more money in public works than most any other. But those are not local dollars. They're not general fund dollars. They're pass-through money from the state and from feds. And that, that issue of siloing funds restricts our ability to do a priority setting locally. And for me, I don't want to, I don't want to further silo funds as an answer to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer and then Alan.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thank you staff for, again, and coming to us with all this great information. I, I will agree with Mike and Counselor Clark that this is not simple stuff, right? It's complicated and I don't fully disagree with what he has to say, actually. As I sometimes do. I think it's unfortunate that we're here, but we are. And, and that's kind of how I've tried to focus myself in making a decision that is not easy. And I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly where this is going, but I do know I'm ready to take the next step to put this out into community and see what folks bring to us and what additional information we can get. For the folks who, who, like us, will all be paying this, should, should we support it? So I think we're at that spot. I think we've, the staff has done an excellent job of bringing information and making some minor adjustments based on feedback from the community and from council. And it's time, it's time to take that step and get some more information out there. But I do really want to appreciate some of the comments about about how difficult this is and whether this is the right choice or not. And, and, and I, I hope that folks will come out and give us their feedback so we can make this hard decision altogether.
Thank you. Alan and then Emily and then Matt.
Yeah, I, I, I get where people are coming from where, when they say, look, I don't get to just raise my fees. Make cuts and, and adjust your budget. I totally get that. I've worked in, in businesses and utilities where, where that's been the case. But I think context and, and history is important in this case. That's why I asked for those three slides, six, seven and eight, to show that that is exactly what we've been doing for a very long time. We don't tell our story very well, but thirteen of the sixteen budgets, last budgets have been all cut budgets, over sixty million dollars in, in cuts to the city services. Citywide FTE per thousand population, which is a good metric, relatively flat or declining for, for over two decades, for around two decades. And, and then specific to the general fund, which includes fire and police, which is sixty percent of the general fund, by the way, declining nearly two decades, you know, five point eight per thousand population in two thousand and eight, now it's four point six, pretty big decline. You know, I really took to heart what Sarah said, that we basically added the city of Springfield in population without, with, with less staff to do the services, the same services. And, and we really haven't hired new fire and EMS in a very long time. What I think all that shows is that we actually have been responsive to that criticism or that comment and that we have done a really good job of controlling costs. And but one of the things you also have to look at is what do we get for all of that? And one of the things, we get fire services and we get enhanced fire services, which is important to me. And, and this mechanism seems to be transparent. It's clear. It's simple. It's understandable. And it has provisions to protect low-income people. Then again, you have to look at, you know, what are the other options that we've been looking at? Selling land came up that Sarah, but that's a one, we don't have a lot of land to sell for one. And that's a one-time fix for ongoing long-term problem and that math doesn't work. And after all the cuts over all the years, we're, you know, sixty million dollars plus. A lot, we've done lots and lots of that. There's not a lot left. And we've tried to do that by not impacting services to public, but that option's almost gone, if not gone completely. And really, it doesn't really exist anymore and that means reductions to services. So again, sixty percent of it of the general fund is fire and police. So that's unavoidable if we go down that route. I, for one, don't really want to live in a city that's just ignores quality of life and just has utilities and fire and police. So I'm supportive of moving this on to the next, to the next step of hearing what people think about this.
Thank you. Emily and then Matt.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all this work and thank you to the Revenue Committee. I agree with Mike that the, the main problem is we need more tax money, more revenue. And yes, we need to work on housing and jobs. That's already part of our work that we've identified. Whatever fee we charge, whether it's fire or something else, that money will come from the same money. There's only so much money in this community. And unfortunately, we need a way to get more of it into operating the city because otherwise we can't. So one of the attractants of this is that it's not just keeping things going, but will actually enhance the fire department, which is way behind. And actually, I think is the very first thing people would choose. So at first I had a hard time because it seems like it should be number one in the general fund. But general fund, we, you know, we just can't cut more and still have function. I like it because it's the least regressive. I really like having the different levels of different sizes of houses. For one, it's an incentive to build smaller houses, which is another one of our goals. So, you know, there's a good thing too. I like it that there's help for the very lowest income and it can use a method that's already set up. The method already set up by EWEB. It's simple. I think it's easy to understand. And, and nobody will like it. We don't, we don't like paying more money, but we don't want to have a city that's in danger of not being a good city. So I hate to have to ask, but if I don't ask for this fee, I'm going to ask for another one and it's going to come out of the same pocketbooks. And at least this one gets the bigger pocketbooks contributing more. So I am definitely ready to go forward and hear what the public think. I hope that in this next month, we can spread more information and education so that their understanding will give them a good place to comment on. I'm looking forward to seeing what happens next and I sincerely hope we can move quickly. This problem gets worse every day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Manager Madari and, and Chief Financial Officer Twila Jacobson for the, excuse me, not Twila Jacobson, I'm sorry, Twila Miller. Sorry, Twila. Thank you for the presentation. And thank you for comments shared by colleagues. In particular, Counselor Gross, Counselor Yay and Counselor Clark's comments really struck a chord with me. I'm all for increasing revenue. In ways that incent behavioral changes for the better, such as, as I've expressed publicly and privately, I'm all in for a soda tax or a soda fee, a DMV fee. That, perhaps one even that, 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 that has a fee structure for, for gas-powered vehicles when folks register their vehicles or establishing a smog check program similar to what, what's realized in Portland and Medford respectively. If if services let me, let me phrase it this way. This afternoon, we heard fire services described as a benefit. And I, I would, I would respectfully push back on that, that they're lifesaving services. They're not a benefit. They're critical services that, as Counselor Gross called them, foundational services. So while I will vote yes today to advance this conversation to the next level, to hear from the widest array of community members possible, I'm not necessarily sold on this particular funding scheme that, that amounts to expanding emergency services to the tune of one squad or two new EMS firefighters. So I recognize the pain points, but I am uncomfortable disproportionately loading the burden on middle-income families. And at a time in history when we're we're encouraging folks to scale down and, and, and our more affluent community members are, are scaling down to smaller homes, what signal are we sending when we balance the budget essentially on the backs of the middle class or, or, or middle-income families in our community? I will be a yes today, but I'm not necessarily sold on this particular concept. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn this over for a motion on the table, I'm just going to make a few comments based on what I've heard. And, and the first thing is just a reminder that in Sarah's presentation, in two islands, what we've heard kind of month after month about this is the problem is that no matter how much we increase the tax base, the tax revenue does not increase proportionally to the cost of serving that increased tax base. And that's why we're in this hole. So yes, we could bump out the urban growth boundary and build more housing, but we have to service that housing and the, and the tax, the way the tax, property tax system works will never, will never recoup the money that we need to recoup in order to fully service. That's why we're in this hole. That's why other cities, all cities across Oregon are in this hole. The second thing is sort of a reminder that, you know, I often say of this city that we deal with the emergency on our streets. And this is one of our sort of critical emergency functions. And whether people are at the lower end of the spectrum or the higher end of the economic spectrum, they are using those services and they will increasingly use those services because there are more of them. And, and particularly people of a certain age, my generation included, uses those emergency services more frequently. And so we continue to have to grow those services. This council had a retreat during the pandemic, an all-virtual retreat, in which the theme of that retreat was the difference between investing in upstream solutions and downstream solutions. And so much of the time, certainly with police and fire, we're looking at downstream solutions. We're not preventing a problem. We're addressing a problem after, after it's occurred. When this council thinks about Library, Recreation and Cultural Services or thinks about public works, really what we're after is upstream solutions. We're trying to build the landscape that we will need, that will be safe, that will reduce accidents, that will address climate. And when we think about LRCs, if you just think about what the library did during the pandemic, it's not just a nice-to-have. It was essential that we were providing hotspots to people who didn't have internet service. We were helping students stay in school because they had internet service. This is not just a nice-to-have. It's an upstream solution to help people live better lives, access services that they need to address their well-being that hopefully will reduce their demand for those sort of emergency responses at any point, but certainly later in life. And this council has to do both, not just emergency services, but also that long-range view of well-being. So I would not compare these two as if one is more important than the other. They're both essential services and they're all, and they're both embraced within your strategic plan. So with that said, I see Randy with his hand up for a second round and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a quick one. Mayor, I agree with you. If we only build single occupancy detached housing, we all know from prior work sessions that there's a net drain on the system. But if we do this responsibly and grow our economy and help business expand and hopefully attract new business that fits into our community, that's, that's a different part of the scenario. And that's part of the problem we have now. We've grown our housing. We've grown residential, even though we're still short. But we haven't grown business to the same extent. So I, I just wanted to say that piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to my friend's comment there with one little bit more. I certainly appreciate my friend Emily and her comments, and I agree. I just wanted to make one clear distinction that's important to me. When I say grow the tax base, what I'm talking about, as Randy alluded to, is new businesses that come into being in our community, whether they move here or whether they're grown here in the first place. Those are new taxpayers, not the same taxpayers as well as new residences. And I believe when I say we need to grow our tax base And I believe when I say we need to grow our tax base as a long-term solution, I'm talking about new, adding more taxpayers and and a bigger pie rather than arguing over the slice of it. Thank you.
You. Emily and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mike. That's what I meant, that there would be a new source of income, not more from the same people. So I'm agreeing with you. Until we can do that, we got to do something else. So thank you for clarifying that.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just also wanted to appreciate something that Emily said that it really resonated with us, but just talking about how if if we choose not to do this, if we choose to go the cut route, how it will cripple our city and how we're able to provide many services that people rely on, including those businesses that need us. They they need the city services in order to operate as well. It's not just our residents, but our businesses rely on us as well. And if we're cutting 10 million from our budget, businesses will also be affected. And so, you know, like I said, it's complicated, but I think we need to always keep in mind that it's not like doing nothing will have no effect. And and I just wanted to appreciate how Emily kind of highlighted that.
Thank you all. And with that, I'm going to turn to Matt if he's available to put a motion on the table. There you go.
Thanks, Mayor. I thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yay. It's a nice segue into this motion. Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance establishing a fire service fee as set forth in Attachment A to this AIS.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Evans, want to speak to that? Or are you raising your hand to say yes?
I I was raising my hand to vote, Mayor. My my technology's not working right.
Okay, it looks like Mike has something he wants to say before we vote. Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to make my vote abundantly clear. I'm going to vote in favor of the public hearing, but I'm not yet in favor of the fee. And I didn't want that confused by anyone. I I want to hear from the community. But I still have very strong concerns about moving forward with this idea.
Okay, thank you all. So with that, there's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. All in favor, please raise your hands, virtual or one. Lindsay, your hand up. I can't see. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. That passed unanimously. Really appreciate that. I'm happy to. We're moving forward on this and look forward to hearing what the public has to say. So thank you, staff, for everything you've done to bring us to this point. And and with that, we'll close out this agenda item. And we'll allow for a minute of transition here and then move on to the for the next conversation. Thank you, Mayor. Our next conversation is regarding development as well. So interesting combination. I believe I'm handing this over to you, Amanda. Is that correct?
Yep.
Whenever you're ready, you can you can just dive in.
That was great. I will share my. Okay. Good afternoon, Council. I'm Amanda de Souza, Development Programs Manager in Community Development. We are here today to continue discussion about the proposed accelerated MPT program. We'd like to start by orienting ourselves to why we're here today and the problem we're trying to solve. Through the 2022 Downtown Priorities and Projects efforts, we heard clearly from the community that housing is one of the biggest opportunities to revitalize downtown. Downtown housing will increase the level of activity on our streets at all times a day and all days of the week, supporting economic activity and a positive social environment. But housing isn't just about downtown revitalization. To the city's policy documents shown on this slide, councils made it clear that building housing in the downtown core is a priority that supports multiple city goals. Compact urban development is identified in the CAP 2.0 as a key strategy to reduce carbon emissions. By locating residents close to jobs, services and other amenities, including transit, we can reduce vehicle miles traveled and associated emissions. Downtown housing also addresses the housing production goals identified in the HIP, increasing the supply and diversity of housing options. Supporting housing downtown is a cross-cutting strategy to address some of our community's most pressing challenges. And you've acknowledged that we need more tools to do so. You've begun to take the steps to implement what we are calling the Downtown Core Housing Initiative. We first presented on this proposed initiative in January and you've begun to take the steps toward implementation, including approval of the Downtown Fee Assistance Program in May. You've heard about the accelerated MPT pilot program a few times this year. Most recently, you held a public hearing on September 16th, and today you're continuing your discussion about the program before considering action. To support your discussion, I'll present on a few items related to the comments that we've been hearing from the community over the past month. We've walked you through the proposed program a couple of times, so I'll just do a quick highlight of the basics here. We're happy to dive into any details if counselors have specific questions. And Attachment B provides additional information on the proposed program. The basic idea is that an accelerated MPT could offer a streamlined process to qualify for a 10-year property tax exemption on new residential units. It would exist as a separate incentive than the existing MPT. As it's currently proposed, the accelerated MPT would have a faster application process, shortening the six-month timeline to about two months. This would allow projects to move forward more quickly and add certainty to the application process. The accelerated MPT would expand eligibility for smaller projects. The standard program requires a minimum of five units, and the proposed accelerated MPT would include a minimum of four units of new construction and two units of conversion. As proposed, the accelerated MPT program boundary is focused on the downtown core. And the program would be a five-year pilot program with staff providing metrics within two years. This would allow us to see whether providing a faster path to the 10-year exemption is helping to move the needle on housing in the core. And finally, projects still need to meet all of the following public benefit criteria from the standard MPT program: historic sensitivity, project design and compatibility, green building, local economic impact, moderate income housing, and project need. Since you last discussed the discussed the proposed program, you've heard and received testimony from a variety of community members, some advocating for increasing program requirements and others for decreasing the requirements. Much of the testimony has pertained to three specific elements: local economic impact, green building, and the proposed program boundary. So I'll walk through those pieces in a bit more detail. The local economic impact criterion includes three key requirements, which would all be carried over into the accelerated MPT program. First, as part of their application, developers must provide a plan showing how they aim to ensure 50% of the project spending will go to lame county businesses. Once a MPT is approved, and while they're preparing for construction, developers must ensure minority and women business enterprises have equitable opportunity to compete for contracts. And finally, during construction, developers and general contractors must ensure all contractors follow wage, tax and licensing laws. Attachment D summarizes the safeguards that are built into the standard MPT program and that would also apply to the proposed accelerated MPT program. In addition to these, projects must provide the names of all contractors that work on the project and the zip code or home city of all labor workers. This information is collected during and after construction and is included in the MPT compliance reports provided to council and is publicly available online. Lack of compliance with any of these requirements would put their tax exemption at risk. At the September public hearing, several counselors counselors requested more specific information about this criteria. Attachment D includes a high-level background of the policy choices underlying these requirements, including how discussions with local stakeholders from the construction and development industries influence these requirements. The next criteria is green building features. Like local economic impact, the accelerated MPT as proposed does carry over the requirements from the standard MPT program. The current green building requirement is that projects must perform at least 10% more efficiently than current building energy code. Projects choose one of three pathways to achieve this, shown here. The current draft ordinance also includes a handful of efficiency opportunities related to green building that would apply to both the accelerated and standard MPT, and these proposed changes are described in Attachment B. The final topic that's been brought up by community members is the proposed accelerated MPT boundary. I'll briefly touch on some considerations. First is the smaller boundary option, which is what's currently included in the proposed ordinance. As we've mentioned, the proposed accelerated MPT program emerged as a component of the Downtown Core Housing Initiative. The first piece of the initiative to move forward was downtown fee assistance, which the Urban Renewal Agency Board established established earlier this year. Because of its funding source, the fee assistance boundary is constrained by the geography of the urban renewal districts and is focused on the high-need, underdeveloped downtown core area. To continue that focus on the downtown core, the boundary from the fee assistance program was carried over to the accelerated MPT, although the accelerated MPT boundary does not need to be constrained by the urban renewal boundaries. Moving forward with the smaller boundary would prioritize the incentivizing of housing in the area with the greatest need and would allow the pilot program to test the new program process on a smaller geographic area. Another option that's been suggested was applying the proposed accelerated MPT program to the standard MPT program boundary during the pilot period. This approach recognizes there's a need for a streamlined MPT process in order for housing in the greater downtown area to move forward. Finally, council could identify another boundary configuration that they'd like to move forward with. I'll add that the MPT review panel met two weeks ago to conduct their annual review of the MPT program, and the majority recommended that the accelerated MPT boundary be focused on the downtown core. If council wants to move forward with an adjustment to the boundary, staff will need to update the proposed ordinance and bring it back for council action at a later date. Before I wrap up, I wanted to briefly touch base on these bar charts that were circulated to you recently and were included in your September 11th work session packet. A couple counselors indicated that they'd like to learn some information about them. These came from an analysis of redevelopment potential produced by a consultant as part of the city's urban growth strategies work and has been used to inform the selection of the climate-friendly areas. The analysis looked at the redevelopment potential in several areas across the city where mixed-use and high-density housing redevelopment aligns with city policy goals, including the downtown core, taking into consideration existing zoning and existing or possible financial incentives. The analysis considered prototypical project costs, expected market rents, and most importantly, land values in the study area. This chart shows the baseline for redevelopment in the downtown core, which is which own in which the only existing MPT, only the existing MPT program is available. This is slightly different from the charts that were sent to you recently. For ease of understanding and to focus discussion on today's agenda item, this version only shows that the types of development that would be eligible for a MPT, standard or accelerated. The height of the bars corresponds to the likelihood of redevelopment, where a higher bar indicates a stronger development potential. You'll see that without additional incentives, all types of development are extremely unlikely to pencil. This next bar chart shows that with the addition of downtown fee assistance, these types of projects come closer to being financially feasible. But even MPT and downtown fee assistance still might not be enough for them to pencil in the downtown core. This redevelopment analysis aligns with the downtown core housing initiative approach. We hope we're creating a toolbox comprised of several different incentive and assistance programs that will be enough to move the needle on feasibility of housing construction downtown. And we've built in metrics collection so we can come back to you in two years to see how effective they've been. I'll end with a brief overview of your options today. If council is comfortable with the accelerated MPT program as it's currently proposed, you could adopt the proposed ordinance in Attachment A. If you'd like to make changes to the proposed program, you could direct the city manager to modify the ordinance and schedule a future action, or you could choose to not move forward at this time. With that, we'll turn it over back to you for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda, for that for that overview. That was incredibly helpful. So I appreciate that. I have Mike and then Randy in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. Two things. Number one, in order for us to address the previous subject matter of trying to grow our tax base, trying to put new housing downtown ought to be one of, in my opinion, our first goals. Sorry, I have on my camera. I just noticed that. And so I applaud the effort, but as the charts show at the end, and some of us have had further information presented to us about specific projects and how they pencil out with performance that would take into account the most favorable conditions, the cost of money these days makes it almost impossible that any of these projects would ever get off the ground. And that it most of the local developers who do this sort of work are already hard at work in other communities where it does pencil. And that presents a pretty pretty tall order for us. I I'm in favor of us moving forward and approving the this proposal as laid out. I'm fine with it. But I don't think it goes far enough. And depending on our discussion, I I would propose that we even make the footprint smaller. I guess I'd say in quotations. And by that, I mean, there are properties within the downtown core boundary that you've laid out that we have at either ownership of or control of. And I would, I think we need to move on this more quickly and with greater effort than even this effort puts forward. I think we should direct staff to come back with an RFP on the on the development of the Butterfly Lot or Keesey Square, or maybe they have a better idea of a particular property and put today's numbers to it and today's cost of money and return and look at all tools that aren't and even some that may not be here. For example, tax increment financing was created exactly for this purpose. And I don't see us including tax increment financing as an option. And I think it's one of the big biggest hurdles because of today's cost of money. And I'll speak to that more in more detail in the second round in in a way as a proposal that I think could get us farther down the road more quickly.
Okay, Randy Van Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. My fear with this proposal, this program, I I agree with Counselor. I don't think it goes far enough. I'm concerned that it's not going to produce the results we're looking for. At the same time, it's what we have in front of us. Recently, I've also become aware of the Climate Friendly Areas Eco Northwest feasibility study. And when are we going to get that presentation to council? I I think that it's almost the cart before the horse. I'd like to know what that says before we start making decisions. Can someone respond to that, please?
Alyssa's joining us.
Yeah, hello. Good afternoon, Council and Mayor Alyssa Hansen-Hunter, planning director. I, our team is planning to present to you on urban growth strategies in early 2025, and included in part of that presentation will be information on that redevelopment analysis that was done as part of the climate-friendly areas, but will also feed into a number of the work that we will be doing for the urban growth strategies, including housing production strategies.
Is there a way to bump that up sooner?
That is a great question. One, I we will have to check with our consultant, who would actually need to present that work. And then two, I know that there's a lot of competing interest on the agenda that I can't speak to. So I, you know, we can, we can look into that.
I would appreciate that. I think it's it's important information and, you know, we're we're being asked to make decisions without all the information. At the same time, I also understand we need to to act and move if we have any hope of of getting things going. I will say that I do like that there's some labor protections that are added in this. I think that that was a component that I've been concerned about in the past. I'm still concerned whether it goes far enough, but I I also get that, you know, there's there's already a question about whether community benefit elements, if if that's not pushing it too far. And and I guess we will find out in pretty short order whether we have any takers for this work. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, at least for now, I I also wanted to support what Counselor Clark said about support what Counselor Clark said about finding a way to try and accelerate, you know, the butterfly lot and some of the lands that we do control and see if we can't get something going sooner. You know, we need housing and we need development in our downtown. That's, that's going to help with some of our behavioral issues. It's going to house people in, um, uh, compact fashion. Um, so anyway, I, I, I really look forward to some more discussion about that piece. And in the interest of time, Mayor, I'm just going to stop now and then maybe reserve a second round. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Uh, Alan and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I was really strongly opposed to elimination of the public benefits as some have suggested. Um, I led the effort back several years ago, a decade ago now, to reform the MUPD and add in real tangible, meaningful benefits for our city to this program. MUPD should not be just a one-dimensional flow of benefits to already rich developers. It has to have benefits to the community and the city, like jobs, like local economic development, like working with minority and women-owned businesses, following all the labor wage and license laws, really important. Green building, energy efficiency and sustainability aspects, contributing to their affordable housing, um, fund. All are super important and are widely, widely supported, uh, efforts and needs and goals. So, um, I'm glad we're keeping those in. As many know, I'm not a fan of the MUPD mechanism. Um, we often hear that, well, it's the only one we have. Well, that's true, but, uh, necessity is the mother of invention. If it were gone, this money would flow back to the general fund. We would create new mechanisms for development and that would be more fair and more transparent and potentially more targeted. So I, 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 I don't buy that, uh, argument any longer. But I am absolutely in favor of the need for more housing, in particular, affordable housing. So I'm very supportive of efforts to get more affordable housing, but not with this mechanism. Um, and then finally to the, the city manager. I thought the whole point of the action we took on the butterfly lot recently was to move it towards housing over retail kind of development and that you're working toward that end. Is that, can you give us a status of that, please?
Yeah, I was gonna wait until-
Exactly what we're trying to do.
I was gonna wait until they ended to do that, but you just, you just took action, I think, last Monday to sell the city property to the urban renewal district. So that really, you've already initiated it. We'll be back with all the other decisions you need to make, but that's in process.
But to, to have it be developed for potentially housing over retail. It's because it's a prime lot for that. Yeah, okay. That's great. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, uh, Jennifer, then Emily.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thank you again, staff. I'm always impressed by how you guys are able to take these somewhat complicated land use actions and boil it down for us who maybe don't live in the code all the time. I am also in support of moving this forward. Uh, I'm, I'm in the camp that I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're going far enough. But I think that the staff's, um, concept of bringing it back in two years and having to check in and seeing how things are going is really smart. And I'll look forward to getting that data and seeing how we might make changes if we need to. As well as, as we're getting all this new information, like, uh, we've already talked about, to see if adjustments need to be made. I've been impressed over the years by our staff's ability to look for opportunities with the, the assets that we have and bringing forward really great partnerships, um, for opportunities. And I assume that will continue to happen, um, with the butterfly lot or other resources that we might have downtown. So I guess it's just a pre-thank you for the work that you, you're all ongoing doing about that. And as a tangential note, I may have misunderstood, uh, Counselor Clark, but I think urban open space is invaluable. And building on top of the Kizi, uh, on top of Kizi Square would be a mistake. That would affect generations of Eugenians. Um, so that's not something I would support. But I do think the butterfly lot is an excellent opportunity and I do look forward to what we could do there.
Okay, thank you. Emily, and then Lindsay.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have formerly been against MUPD, not because it's bad or the math doesn't work out, but, um, people didn't trust it. Um, I think that we've seen some, some benefits from it. And I remind everybody that the MUPD was overhauled where I started nine years ago, um, making some really good changes that I'm not sure everybody was aware of. I think that investigating the benefits again, uh, would be fine, but not right now. It's a separate issue. We're not changing what we already have basically in the original, in the revised MUPD. So can we go forward with this and then come back to those separate issues? Cause they're going to take a long time. And if we deal with all of that before we decide, it, it's not going to help us. We really need to do it now. And, uh, the MUPD that we already have can be used outside of the core. Could we see the maps of the small and the expanded ideas for MUPD? Let's put that back up. Great, thank you. That's good. Um, we, we have more building, we can put it down, in the full MUPD towards the river. We already have a lot of building there. It's the core that's really desperate right now. We have to do things. And it fits in with our need for the climate friendly. We know we're going to densify downtown. It's the most tax lots and also it makes sense for the middle of the city to, to be very dense. I also think, I'm all about affordable housing, but we have to have some market rate housing downtown also. I believe we need a mixed population all over the city, but especially downtown. And, and I think that that's okay. I don't think, you know, we should abandon affordable housing. We, we really need that. But we need everybody. If we have market rate housing, we'll have people with more money who will go shopping. That will bring in retail, which will then bring people from other parts of town. So as far as the butterfly lot, although originally I wanted it to be something more public, we gotta have housing. So let's build on the butterfly lot. I would really like to have the bottom floor be commercial. For one, if my bedroom was on the bottom floor, I don't really want people looking in there like it is at Capstone. So, um, and I got my own feelings about Kizi. I think it should, should be a park. We should do something with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Amanda, for the great presentation and for including all the testimony and information that we've been receiving from the community. I kind of came in today thinking I'd need to defend against making changes to this process. So I'm really happy to hear my colleagues speak to, uh, to keeping it as it stands and moving it forward today. We'll see how we vote. Um, but, you know, I just want to acknowledge all of the people who, who did submit testimony. All of the points of discussion that we've received are valid. You know, we, we want to see these projects move quickly and develop our core. Um, and, you know, removing public benefits requirements might help with that. But, um, to be clear, like, I, I don't believe that we should be removing the public benefits. We need to ensure that we're building a future that's aligned with our values as a city that we've, we've, you know, set in our strategic plan. Because we know we can help to protect our climate. We can ensure living wages are, you know, for, for our working people who are creating this housing. We can create the affordable housing that we need and we can incentivize the construction. And so I think tying all of that together, you've done an amazing job. So yes, I'm, uh, prepared to vote in favor of, of this program as it stands today. But I would like to, um, in the future, uh, initiate a process for a more in-depth review of the MUPD policy entirely, looking at all of these different public benefits requirements, how they're working, how we could potentially strengthen them or, um, or adopt them. And to, so I'm looking forward to, uh, moving forward and hopefully seeing, um, a lot of cool innovative projects, um, happening in our core. So again, thank you for your work.
Thank you. I have, uh, Matt, uh, Mike and Randy wanting a second round, but I'm just going to insert myself for just a minute. I appreciate comments from, uh, both Lindsay and Emily sort of reminding us of what our opportunities are, are here and that recognizing that this excel, two things can happen. This accelerated MUPD can go through, we can get the data and we can learn from experience. And this council can, can request, can direct staff to, to come back and take a look at, uh, the, the major, the larger MUPD program and, and consider some of the things that have been brought forward. So you, oh, you've always had that option. You still have that option. So you don't lose, you don't lose anything. And in fact, you gain a lot of information. I just wanted to ask staff, I had a conversation with Will yesterday. I, Amanda, I, Will may be on here as well about sort of the possible request. We have smaller piece of, pieces of property downtown. He mentioned something like four and eight unit properties for whom the main, the, the existing MUPD is too large. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we know of at least one developer who has a four-unit project that they're ready to move forward with. That, that project wouldn't qualify for the standard MUPD program. And so they've kind of just been, they knew that this process was happening. They were optimistic that, um, the program would move forward with this, with, with the revised minimum, so revised minimum of four units. And they've indicated that they're ready to move forward as soon as we are ready to make the program available. And so they, with both fee assistance, which they would be eligible for, and the accelerated MUPD, that those are the two tools that they need to move forward.
Okay, well, that's a good, that's a good beginning metric for us to kind of have in our thinking. And then, uh, agree that this council, having moved forward with the, with the property into the new, the city hall property, what was to be city hall property and the other parking lot into the urban renewal district, just opens up a huge, a huge set of opportunities for you for housing downtown. So, okay, uh, Mike and then Randy.
Amanda, thank you, Mayor. Um, Amanda, I know that you may not be quite ready to do it. But, and, and you're probably preparing a presentation for council with regard to our Action Monday to move that into urban, into urban renewal. Can you speak towards your plan with the, with the butterfly lot property?
Yeah, so you got, you have already taken the action needed to transfer the property from city to the agency. Right now, our plan is to come back, or my plan has been to come back in the spring with a proposed disposition process for the North Butterfly Lot. Internally, we've all been imagining a housing mixed-use project. Speaking with the Counselor Sumpf's request, we know mixed-use buildings are key for downtown. Ground floor commercial or ground floor active uses are very important for our downtown. And so, um, coming back in the spring with the proposed disposition process, which would likely be an RFP, which is our standard process. In between now and then, we, we want to talk to a lot of stakeholders about what they want to be seeing on the site, especially with a lot of neighbors, um, around there, speaking with, uh, the farmer's market to talk about what their kind of goals are for the property. And so our hope is to bring back, um, a proposed, uh, process and possible criteria for you to consider, including and then hear feedback from council about what kind of criteria they want to see for a future project at that site.
Thank you very much. It's my opinion that that's perfect, as, as others have said, for housing at least above ground floor. And I think, uh, many of my colleagues have seen a perspective that was, or I mean, a, 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 why am I losing the word? A prospectus that was created in a what-if scenario by a local company and talked about the fact that the difficulty is to assemble enough investors to get a return sufficient to pay just for the amount of money that has to be borrowed to do this. The costs become too much to provide more than, you know, a two percent return, which, uh, uh, these days, if you can borrow money for six or seven percent, good luck. And so my question is of our city attorney, I, as I understand it, it's true that if we were to create with tax increment financing within the zone there, uh, zero-interest loans that would have a clawback feature, that it would be legal to do that, that if, in fact, the developer of said project were able to, to create something that, that ended up being more profitable than they imagined it was or ended up not needing as much help of a zero-interest loan, that they could then, uh, share in that excess with the city for having given them a zero-interest loan to do so. Am I correct in understanding that that's within the law when it comes to tax increment financing?
I see that city assistant city attorney Lauren unmuted, so I will let her speak to that, um, if she's ready, and then I can chime in if.
Counselor Clark, that's a great question. It, it would depend in large part on the mechanics of the loan program. There is some case law out there around use by urban renewal districts of tax increment funds for loans versus program revenue for loans. Um, our existing downtown revitalization loan program, um, is based entirely on, not taxed, not taxed increment funding. And so I, I, I will need to, I think, learn a little bit more about what you're envisioning and do a little bit more research before I could say definitively one way or the other.
Let me just say that I hope before the concrete plans for the butterfly lot come back to council and I, and I hope it's sooner than spring, if we can, or a, as soon in the late winter as possible. I hope that the two of you will have sat down on that and talked about that. And, and I might even recommend some other local business folks that have some ideas on this. That could be part of the conversation to get, for us to get creative and see a project done successfully that will add to the tax base and at the same time, bring us more housing downtown more quickly in an affordable way. I think doing that can set the example that would lead to other projects. So I'm, I'm very hopeful and I'm sure we'll talk about it more. Thank you.
Thank you. And Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I want to echo what Counselor Clark was saying about the return rate. I, I know the perception, um, Counselor Zalink had just reiterated, is that these people, the developers are making money hand over fist. Most of the return rates are about two percent. Um, it's hard to get investors for a two percent return rate. I personally would not invest any of my money for only two percent, especially when there's any risk, which there are with some of these developments. So, you know, that's, that's a misnomer that's out there. And then the fact that the interest rates, I want to emphasize, even though Counselor Clark talked about the inference, in, interest rates that are six, seven, eight percent or higher, um, it's really a difficult market right now. And then I want to add the piece that I've brought up before. When you develop in a, a downtown core like this, i- it's not like building the Knight Scientific Accelerator over in the UFO where they have room, the, the builder has room to, to stage their equipment, there's room to stage their building materials. It has to be done on a daily, sometimes hourly basis, because there's nowhere to put this stuff in the downtown core with buildings surrounding the, the site you're trying to build on. Not to mention the added cost of demolition, uh, when you have a building that's a couple feet away or, or even touching the building that's being razed. So the, these are things that make it a little more difficult. Now, a question for staff, why are we limiting the building height component of the MUPD when the downtown core will allow a hundred and twenty feet?
I don't believe there's, um, a height limit built into the MUPD program outside of the standard.
That's what I thought I saw in this, one of the slides.
We are, I, what we've included is the, a minimum number of units. So the minimum of four units or minimum of two, two units, but I don't believe there's.
So if somebody wanted to build, the developer wanted to build a hundred and twenty-foot structure in the downtown core, they would be allowed to do that and it would be eligible for a MUPD application.
Yep, whatever currently allows, yeah.
That answers that. Thank you. I think that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Alan.
Yeah, I think, Randy, you misconstrued what I was saying. I, I, I understand the low margins in housing, which is why I'm not in that business. But the perception is, is that, and rightfully so, people building multi-story, multi-family housing are not poor people. Uh, they're already rich people. So, um, and that, that's, that's a perception that pervades throughout the community and, and that- pervades throughout the community and and that that's why this the public benefits are so important uh, in to to maintain in this project, or this pro uh, program.
Oh, okay. Randy, one more comment?
This will be my last one. Um, you know, the the public benefit is the fact we're getting compact housing in our downtown core. We're putting people in our downtown core, which helps address a number of issues that we have with vacant buildings, with behavioral issues. Uh, it's making our downtown a vibrant place. You know, show me a city that doesn't have a vibrant, healthy downtown and I'll show you a city that's pretty much everyone I'm aware of is in decline. Uh, this is, this is important for the entire community. You know, I I understand the downtown is mostly in Ward One, but the reality is, I consider the river, I consider our entrance ways and I consider our downtown. Those are things that belong to everybody and everyone benefits from it. So we all need to take an interest in it. And so the, I I just want to make that point. The main public benefit we are getting is the building of more housing in our downtown. Thank you, Mayor.
Right, necessary but not sufficient.
Okay, thank you. That, this, this is a debate we could carry on for a long time. So I'm willing to get one more, but I think, you know, we, we're ready to move on. Um, and it's almost time, so. Mayor, I don't know if you saw the note from Matt. Oh, no, I didn't see the note. He needs Randy to put the motion forward. Okay, Randy, uh, there you go. Randy, could you put the motion on the table?
Give me just a second. I was a little unprepared for that, but no problem. Mayor, move to-
Recording stopped.
Oh.
Recording in progress.
All right. Mayor, uh, I move to adopt an ordinance concerning mo- concerning multiple unit housing property tax exemption, amending sections two point nine four five, two point nine four six and two point nine four seven of the Eugene Code nineteen seventy one and providing a sunset date.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands.
Counselor Clark has his hand up.
Counselor Clark, you need to speak to this first. Uh, go ahead.
I don't know if an amendment is necessary. And so before I suggest one, I just want to look at Amanda and e- everybody, staff folks that are here, is a is a report on utilization of this available, possibly available before two years? I don't want to wait two years to find out if anybody, that nobody used the thing. I'd like to know if it happens sooner so we can make adjustments and move faster.
Yes, well, all applications will be still coming to you via the consent agenda, via your consent calendar. Um,
My concern is that no one will use it. And I know you mentioned the one project outside of that one. If nobody else uses this for the next two years and we don't talk about it again, I think that's a problem. So I'd like to know if it's being utilized or the discussion is being had, or if it's not, sooner than two years. Is that possible?
Like, Will might have, I mean, yes, yes, we can, but it looks like Will just jumped on, so.
I will doubt it. Community Development Director, um, I uh, would, w- w- we, we can definitely do reporting um, in a shorter timeframe. Um, I guess uh, city attorney, if you'd prefer that we make that as an amendment, we can do that. Um, but otherwise we can just-
Very. Well, the Counselor Clark will, um, the ordinance requires staff to come back to you to, within two years, but certainly staff could choose, I mean, hear your direction, bring more reporting back sooner without an amendment.
That's my strong request then, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, thank you for that request. That's great. Um, all right, all in favor, we have a motion on the table. It's approved, it's seconded, so all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five. Counselor Keating has sent me a note that he's a yes, and I know he's tied up, so I'm going to count him as a yes. That's six, and I'm missing Greg. Maybe he's off. Uh, okay, that's six in favor. There's Greg. He's in favor. Seven in favor. And any opposed? One opposed. Alan, okay, thank you very, very much. I'm really pleased that we're moving forward with this and appreciate the thoughtful conversation and the hard questions and the preparation that staff has done to put us in this place. So thank you all very much. And we're only two minutes over time with a really big schedule, lots of big choices. So I appreciate all of your hard work and we are adjourned.